We'll get started. Okay. I want to open the planning board meeting for May 21st, 2018. City and Limb and Stuff Planning Board. We have 6:30. Public hearing. Planning Board Recommendation on City Council Petition 59-18. James Whitney and ten registered voters amend zoning ordinance to add drive-thru to all allowable uses in MU1. Do I have a representative from Mr. Whitney?
They weren't invited.
No. Now, he made a presentation before.
Yeah. I was going to speak about it, I believe.
And can you recap what is...
Okay.
And the reason was what, or continued?
Uh, don't know if I am aware of the reason. Uh, but it may have just been scheduling because it had to be advertised and, and, you know.
Okay.
He came through, um, he actually had those parcels rezoned. Did the city council back? Year ago?
Yep.
Eight months ago, something like that. Um, to MU1, which was approved. For, I think, four or five of the lots at the entrance. Um, and MU1, uh, drive-thrus are not allowed currently.
That's correct.
Drive-thrus in, say, a restaurant, you know, Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, a bank or something, that, that would be okay. But, um, so he would like to, let's say, they might have a drive-thru restaurant, uh, at the entrance potentially to research drive. Now that it's starting to be populated with businesses, um, the registry and,
Confidential Stone.
and Process Cooling, um, would like to maybe have some retail at the entrance as well.
Okay.
Including a drive-thru.
So do we want to... The, the question I have is when I look at the map, we got down here is Central Street, this little sliver. Where is it? I'm upside down. Down here, okay? But we also have MU1 over here. Over here. Over here. A little bit over there. And over here, Nashua Street. Uh, Hamilton Street, rather. So... The petition, I think, the way it's written is to allow, it would allow it throughout the city for the sake of one location. Okay? So I don't have a problem with his isolated location. But the way it's written has a much larger impact than I think we want to give to have drive-thrus. Now... The option that I have, I, I was thinking of as we looked at this, is that we could say it would be by special permit. Okay? So that would allow it in all the different places, but it still would come under our control if we just didn't want it in a certain area or it doesn't fit. Then we could say it wouldn't, uh, then we have some, we still have some control. Okay? So that's the suggestion that I would have, okay? Uh, at that point, so. Is there anyone else that wants to, any questions or comments on this? So, and without Mr. Whitney here, I, you know, that, I don't have a lot, much more information.
But I, no, but I agree with you, John. I think that's a good idea. Then we can still oversee it.
Okay.
I think that even, he may have even mentioned that at one point when he was discussing it.
Yeah.
Just that there was not even an option to, or a forum for him to, or a mechanism to get it for the board for, you know, a special permit. So I, I would be in agreeance.
Now, I'm not sure legally, we can make this recommendation back to the city council. Okay? And I think our recommendation, and it has to be, you know, a plausible recommendation. But I, when I look at it, I'm sort of curious to whether it's a significant change and it doesn't fit under the initial petition.
I don't, I, I think it fits because if it's worded this way, because under our agenda it says to amend the zoning ordinance to add drive-thru to all allowable uses under MU-1 zoning. So, I mean, I'm thinking of the word allowable as it potentially could be allowed and it could potentially be allowed by special permit.
Right.
Okay.
It's not, it doesn't say all.
By right.
By right uses or as of right uses. Then I think it would have to be amended.
Okay. Well, that's, okay. That sounds good to me. Okay, um, at that point, I think I'd call for a motion. A motion would be to close the hearing.
Motion, uh, to close the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Do I have any additional discussion? Okay, in that case, I'll close the hearing.
Can we move to the regular meeting?
Yes.
The regular motion can move.
Move to the regular meeting, call for order.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Craig Reddick.
Here.
Paul Lizer. Salvador De Tony. John Souza.
Yeah.
Salvatore Oso.
Here.
And Thomas Carrigan.
Okay, minutes of May 7th.
The motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion made and seconded. Do you have a second? Pat?
I was here.
Oh, second, sorry.
Motion made and seconded. Any additions or deletions or corrections?
Nope, that's good.
Hearing on, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries. Plans submitted. And are approved for 216 and 244 Prospect Street. Yeah, I prefer the small ones.
Mr. Chairman, members. Director Kelly. For the record, my name is Frank Preston. I live in the Vanuus Ocean. On future.
Thanks, thanks, Frank.
The schedule does even out, doesn't it?
What's that?
The schedule does average out, doesn't it?
It does, it does, yes.
Back in 1994, a series of lots were created on Prospect Street. And two of those lots, about two acres each, were developed with one driveway approaching on the other lot. After all these years, since 1994, it's finally decided to, the owners have finally gotten together to repair the, the error. And I have drawn a plan showing a land trade of equal areas, 2,618 square feet each, so that each, each party comes out all within. The end result is to put the driveway that approaches on the opposite lot under the right lot, along with some associated landscaping.
Okay. So I see 216, okay. Okay. This is the house up on the hill.
That's right. They're pretty, pretty high up there.
Yeah, they are.
They're two-acre lots and we're proposing a land trade of 2,618 square feet. 2,800, oh yeah, 2, 2,618.
All right, I'm still trying to get oriented. Where exactly are Prospect Streets?
Prospect Streets is over here, really.
Right where you come up Lawrence Street.
Yeah, it's exactly.
See?
Across the street.
Right across from Lawrence. You know, come on Lawrence.
Yes, okay, I know what you're talking about. And it has that long driveway.
So Prospect, so Prospect Street is actually here. Okay, and Lawrence would be, Lawrence would be right over there. That's that long driveway.
Okay.
It does show on the locus, but in this 11-by-17 plan, the locus is so small, it's illegible. So unfortunately.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So...
So you're, you're taking...
The driveway, they used a common driveway up to that point?
Up to that, up to that point, it's covered by common driveway easements.
Okay.
At this particular location, they drifted outside the easement and across the lot line.
Okay.
So at this location, there is no easement covering the driveway. And it's been rather nicely landscaped around the two, so there's some associated landscaping that I'd like to bring onto the lot that it goes with.
Yeah, and there's no problem, they look nice, there haven't been a problem. Uh, there is some washout town up the bottom that's often we get touch.
There's no physical changes proposed, of course. They're not going to do any construction based on this.
I don't see the driveway for 244.
I, we don't show it because that's not involved, that's nowhere near where the, where the land trade is. It comes up on the side there.
I thought so, it comes out here.
That's right, that's right. In all honesty, John, the, uh, I went through a few versions of this trying to decide how much detail to show. It gets a little busy really quickly. So I, uh...
Yeah.
I tried to filter things out a little bit to focus on the, uh, the features that were most important here.
So... You're, you're moving this line here.
Yeah, the, uh...
From here to here, and here to here.
This is the existing line, the dashed line.
The dashed line.
That line disappears. That line disappears.
So you picked up these two plots.
So the line kicks over to the other side of the driveway here.
Right.
And the landscaping. And in return, this has really no consequence, but we wanted the, the areas to even out.
Okay, so basically your swap is here and here.
It's an even swap, exactly right.
Oh, I see it now, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Guys, just as in here, the swap is this piece of land here and this piece of land here.
Like I said, I agonize over how it presented. It's not, it's not very easy to work out.
Yeah, no.
That's right, yeah. I'm looking at it and I'm saying, I don't see the swap down here. Okay, I figured, okay.
And I, I put the red lines on there to show the ultimate result, or where the lot lines are going to be.
Thank you for the red line.
And their, and their frontage comes off of Prospect Street.
That's right, not that it changes.
Right, nothing, nothing changes.
It's all shown in that little inset there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. I make a motion to endorse.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to endorse. Any further discussion? Hearing on, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
And I approve the lots one, two, and three on northwesterly corner of Pleasant Street and Chestnut Street. Okay, that's true.
I'm David Leroy, I'm in engineering.
Okay, David? Okay, you got the full size, okay.
Uh, property consists of two properties, um, acquired by Franco Realty Trust. And original D-division line is shown with the dashed line.
Again?
Done. And we're creating three lots, lot one, two, and three, which all have required area and frontage.
Now, this is the land that they're, they've been clearing?
Yes.
Okay.
This is on...
On Pleasant Street, on Pleasant Street and Chestnut? You'd say that there was an old bond and then they took that down.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So lots one, two, and three, originally one lot?
Yes.
And you're dividing it...
No, originally two, uh, two properties.
Two lots. This lot and this lot.
Oh, I see.
You're dividing this.
Okay.
So they make one lot here.
I see, one and two. And then you're making one, two, and three. And your frontage is on...
Well, this one has frontage on both.
So both Pleasant and Chestnut.
Right.
And then lot one is Pleasant.
Right.
And the, the zone, and the, it's 100, oh, it's, oh, 50 feet, okay.
Yeah, it's a residence, uh, uh, B.
B, okay.
Okay? And this is part of the area they were, that we just had the zoning change.
Well, and I did check that, that these lots are not, they were not, they were originally part of it.
They were not, they were originally part of there, but they were taken out.
Yes, they were, they were taken out, yes.
Okay.
So they are still our B.
So they're still our B.
I make a motion to endorse.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to endorse. Any questions? Additions? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries.
Thank you, all for your time.
Sure, thank you.
I like these easy ones. Modification of site plan approval for 45 Summer Street.
Schedule this?
Yep, we have to schedule it.
Schedule these three?
Uh, yes. They are special permit modifications, so we will have to advertise, so we have to go out before...
Well, they have special permit, okay.
These are, uh, the proposed apartments on the narrow street there, Summer?
They are, they are changing their parking configuration a bit. So there was, they have a special permit specifically for the parking because it's off-site and they are going to have additional off-site parking at 20, uh, 20 Summer Street. But because...
That house that they bought?
Yes, right behind Schofield's. Um, so because there's a special permit for the use and the parking, both of which reference the parking and this, obviously, the site plan. So they're going to modify all three of those.
Yeah.
So today...
So we have some questions for that because of the bicycle thing and all that.
Uh, the rail trail?
The rail trail, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So...
Can I make a motion to, to schedule these in, in a block, in block?
Well, you can, no, you have to be individual, but...
All right.
So...
Because they're different times.
Okay. So it could, wouldn't be our next meeting, which is June 4th, it would be, um, June 18th at 6:30?
June 4th?
June 18th.
June 18th.
She needs time there.
6:30 for the first one?
So, uh, second?
I have a motion made for modification of site plan approval for 45 Summer Street for June 18th at 6:30. Any discussion? Hearing on, a call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries. Motion is in order.
Uh, make a motion to schedule, uh, 3.4 for the, uh, special permit for the use at 6:35?
6:35.
Second.
So that's special permit for the use?
Yeah.
Motion made for the modification of special permit approval for 40 Summer Street, 45 Summer Street for the use. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion to schedule, uh, the special permit for the parking of 45 Summer Street at June 18th at 6:45.
Okay, uh...
No, 6:40.
6:40. I have a motion made and seconded.
Second.
Okay, for modification of special permit approval for 45 Summer Street for parking. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries. Okay, and site plan approval for 45 Sack Boulevard for proposed Popeyes Louisiana Chicken.
Is that going to be in the area that we already met with?
Yeah.
Uh, it's right in front of the cinema. That, okay, it's right in front of the cinema.
Oh, okay.
Right in front of the cinema.
Yeah. Across from...
Across from 110?
Uh, yeah.
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 Oh, okay.
This room there, I, I've been wondering if something was going to go there.
Yeah, it's been tossed about. IHOP's looking at it, but, um, I guess they're going forward with the Popeyes.
Okay.
So that's just the site plan. Uh, we can do that.
Can we do it June 18th at...
Uh, we could, we could do it the 4th.
Oh, oh, that's right. So...
Yeah, 6:30.
Yeah, let's do that at 6:30.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, 4th, 6:30. I have a motion made and seconded to schedule site plan approval for 45 Sack Boulevard for proposed Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen, June 4th at 6:30. Any discussion? Hearing on, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries.
Do you want to go back to 6:50?
Yeah, just in time.
Yeah, we're on time. Go back to the hearings, 6:50. Continued public hearing for city council petition 40-18, Kristen Kelly, planning director, amend article 18, section 22-105 of the limited zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana, marijuana facilities. Uh, we have a joint meeting, uh, scheduled with the city council on June 28th.
May 29th.
I, I made it too, yeah.
Yeah, May 29th.
May 29th?
29th, it's the day after, um...
May 29th.
Memorial Day, so it's at 5 o'clock.
So if you could, if you could most...
5:00. And that's in their chambers, right?
Uh, yes.
So do we want to move this to June 4th or June 18th? Continue it?
Well, we're going to have to.
Yeah, I know, but do we want it on the 4th or the 18th?
Um...
If you do it on the 4th, then nothing's going on, we can always continue it.
All right, so we'll schedule a...
But we, but...
Schedule it for June 18th.
Yeah, and we won't have their inputs. We'll have...
You're going to wait until the 18th?
Okay, wait until the 18th.
So I move to schedule it for June 18th at, um, 7:00?
Okay, motion is to continue...
6:45 is not the earliest, if it's the case. Yeah.
No, yeah.
6:45, you think? Okay.
Yeah.
That doesn't...
Yeah, these others aren't going to take long.
Okay. 6:45.
Second.
Okay, for, continued?
That is petition 40...
June 18th? Yeah, 6:45. I have a motion made and seconded to continue the hearing to June 18th at 6:45. Any further discussion?
I will just say, um, Pat has offered to be on the committee as well and, as Tom.
Good.
And he has confirmed he can make that meeting. And you were working on that, I believe.
I'm, I'm, I should be on side.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, and then I forwarded, um, additional information to the city council members. Um, I asked Lynn to forward it to the legal affairs subcommittee who, you know, should be making up the other part of this committee. Um, so I, again, I have the, the draft ordinance where it's at now, the information I received from Hope and Paige based on questions that we've sent them, and definitions. And that really hasn't changed from the last time you had it in your pocket. I can always send you the update, you know, I can send it digital or whatever, uh, if you can review it, um, before the meeting, so we can, any questions or, you know, discussion, we'll be ready.
Yeah, I think that, well, no, discuss, right now, we have, uh, a, a regular medical marijuana was modified to include both. There's a possibility we may want to separate them out. But, oh, we have to change it. You know, all your definitions say the same. Okay? It's, it's locations, uh, the security requirements are different, the, and, and there are a number of other things that are different. And there are different requirements that we can put on with medical, you know, with the combination. I think one of the questions is, do we want to have, leave medical lawyers today? Use the base, the basis of that for a second and, the second one that we would take care of medical, uh, uh, no, do two things. To take and with the medical marijuana, uh, include a cultivation, which would be free, be an industrial. Okay, those two things would be in the industrial. And then, and then the other, the last one is recreational. Do we want it in industrial? And then how do we want to control it? So I think those, in the scope, without getting into any detail, is how I see where the, the discussion lies or which way we want to go. Okay, not making with any decisions or, but I, I see those as probably the chief points. Would you agree?
Uh, yes. I also sent out several questions again today. Hopefully, we'll hear back in time for the meeting, we'll see. But, um, included that question, you know, are we that offered two separate ones? Or can we restrict? I know that, I think there's a way you can restrict certain types of uses. So you might allow grow facilities and have as many as you want, but, um, you don't allow, um, a retail center. Or, or you limit it to one out of the potential four licenses or that kind of a thing. I also ask what, how do, um, home, home growers fit into all this? Do they need to meet those ordinance requirements? Is it a size-based thing, like how many, how many plants you have? So, um, so I've sent those off and I'll, I'll get you the copy of those questions. And then if, um, yeah, if we have to do that before next Tuesday, then we'll have that. But if, those are questions that we can talk about.
Yeah, just so you're, you can take a look at this. In Saturday's paper, this is Fitchburg's ordinance. The whole thing was printed out, okay? And you can take a look at it or if you can get Saturday's paper, um, take a look. It's pretty interesting where they're doing things totally different than we are. Okay? And they're different sets of requirements. All the definitions are the same, but how they look at the different definitions seem to be different.
They allow it in a lot more areas.
Okay, and they, they have pretty much open allow. If you want to take a peek at that.
Please find it on the...
You might want to take a peek at it. I've read it. It was tough reading. I think I'll do it online, it'd be easier.
If Tom or Patrick can make it, I'll go to the meeting.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I'll be your backup.
It, it would be, yeah, you're more than welcome to be there.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a city council, it's sort of an open meeting. They use the city council chambers and... Who's chairman of legal affairs? Is that Mark?
I think it's Mark.
I saw it with Mark, okay. So I think it's Mark and Claire and...
John Ross.
Who's meeting? Is it just the subcommittee that's meeting?
Yeah.
Well, the, the discussion was, you know, Mark and Claire both have an interest in this and it had, they happen to both be on the legal affairs subcommittee, so why don't we combine that and use that, their time slot, you know, their, their meeting time, basically.
The subcommittee meeting time.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Because the reason I say that is if this were a joint meeting with the city council, we would need a quorum there. But if we're going to use a subcommittee of our own group...
Yeah, it is.
To meet with their subcommittee, that's different, okay?
Right, and I think this is an informal, it's not necessarily a joint, um, public hearing.
Okay.
So it's, you know, more of a, you know, a...
Okay, all right.
It's not a public hearing, of course.
Last things out.
All right.
And that, because we're still having our own public hearings.
What, what time is it?
5:00.
5:00?
Yeah. Definitely in the chamber.
Okay. So I have a motion made and seconded to continue this hearing to June 18th at 6:45. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries. Okay. About 4.1, we...
10?
We just discussed it. Okay, it's continued. Uh, new business, city council petition 59-18, James Whitney and ten registered voters amend zoning ordinance to add drive-thru to all allowable uses on MU1 zoning. Um, the recommendation, uh, I would be making there that this be added as a special permit, okay, uh, to MU1.
I make that, I'll...
As an amendment to their, uh, to the, to the requested on the change.
I make that my motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that the, we recommend that this change be a special permit by the planning board. I have to, yeah, I have to put in who, who it was.
SB PB.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. Any questions?
And that would, um, in the same language that they have, as Carol said earlier, um, add it, um, to the allowable uses under MU1.
Right, so allowable, we, at that point, we would say want to change allowable to special permit planning board. Okay, and that would restrict it, because the way it's written today, it's, it's all over the city and there are certain places we wouldn't want to drive through.
Right.
So this way, we still have the, okay, and keep it in the planning board anyway. Any further discussion? Hearing on, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no. Motion carries.
But I'm sorry, who made the motions on?
I, I did.
Carol.
I did, and Pat, second.
Carol, thanks. See, it's good we have a smoke.
Yeah, see, you stepped, you said yes. Plan board recommendation of city council petition 66-18, Barbara Richardson, and I'll accept Garfield Street as an accepted way. They referred it to us, this, I know where Garfield Street is. And we, we definitely got to get a recommendation, the DPW.
Yes, I didn't hear back, I don't, in my, in all fairness, I didn't give them a lot of the time. I didn't think to ask them far enough in advance.
Garfield is one of those little streets out...
It's right here. I mean, is Hayes Street an accepted way?
No, no.
Is Cleveland Street, is Rose Road?
These, these are all, and the most of them are like 18 feet wide, or 20 feet wide. They're really, they're no, no sidewalks, no lights.
No, they do have public utilities.
I don't know about Garfield, but some of the others are, are poured.
Are they plowing there?
They're not yet.
They're plowing.
Oh, they plow.
Well, they, they try to, yeah, there's, so like some...
Where's Garfield?
Garfield is off of Old Lancaster.
Oh, okay.
Well, can, can I make a motion to refer to DPW for, uh, their input?
Yeah. I think the city council has already done that, but they're...
Oh, okay, well, then...
No, that's, because they said...
They may have, but I asked for it because they didn't have it yet.
Yeah, no, no, you're perfectly right to do it, yeah, that way, yeah, no.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, so the motion is to refer to, uh, city council, uh, yeah, to refer to, uh, DPW uh, for input on condition of road. Okay?
Second.
Do we also wanna refer it, um, I don't, well, we'll leave the DPW, 'cause I think we have a problem with, uh, accepting something like that, because it's, it was an old paper street, and, you know, there's a lot of deeds involved and stuff like that, so there's, I don't know how, how that gets taken care of.
Well, this goes back to the whole unacceptable street, and in this particular case, I believe they would have rights of the center line, so they could have everyone sign off and, and, you know, take the, take the right of way, um, they could do a betterment and have everyone chip in towards the improvement of the road, um, to get to the standards where it would be acceptable.
Yeah.
Um, so it's different things, I don't know how likely it is for them also to have that buy-in, but, you know,
Yeah, okay, and we'll go...
we're recommending them a cap, yeah.
We'll go DPW, and this is more for city council, so, and our input. Uh, once we get an input from the DPW, we can probably schedule a sidewalk in the future, but I don't think, until we get something from them, I don't think that's necessary.
All right, so I'll put this under old business for the next meeting, and we'll hopefully receive something back, but, from the DPW by then.
Correct, so the motion is to refer to DPW for input, and continue to the next meeting.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Planning board recommendation of city council petition sixty-seven dash eighteen, Joe A. Natola, accept Lexington Circle together with Waterline Eastman as shown on street acceptance plan in Levisse Maschus prepared for the Sheldon Hills Trust by Hannigan Engineering dated March fifteen, twenty eighteen. Okay, this is the same thing, even though this is a little further down, we have the drawings, um...
So, uh, Lexington Circle is the new coke cycle over at Sheldon Hill. We, um, it was on the last agenda to release the bond, so we had gotten feedback from the DPW, they were all set, um, and ready to go.
Looks on.
Yeah.
They got the deets here and all that. Did we get... Do we have a sheet here from the, uh, DPW?
You know, I didn't include it again, uh, it was...
Oh, okay, that's what I was gonna throw.
Sorry, they provided that information when they were here for the bond, for the bond lease, so they had confirmed that everything was all set.
Everything was all set.
So I can get that to you.
Yeah, that, that's all right, I was just looking for it in the package.
Yeah, yeah.
So I can, uh, move to a, um, to, um, approve the request for the acceptance of, um, Lexington Circle with the Waterline Eastman.
Correct. Motion made and seconded to recommend the city council acceptance of... Um, I don't know if you wanna get the street right.
Lexington Circle.
You know, Lexington Circle with the Waterline Eastman as shown on street acceptance plan, Levisse Maschus prepared by Sheldon Hill Realty Trust. Any further discussion? Hearing or not, a call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Both say no, motion carries. Bond lease approved for Patricia Drive.
Um, I put this on here, it's a placeholder in case I have more information. Uh, this is, uh, Jimmy Whitney project, um, they came in, they have a, a little bit of a bond, about five thousand dollars that we're holding, uh, it's kind of one of those housekeeping, um, things, so I did ask the DPW for a recommendation, they, um, or for a list of, of an evaluation, and they came up with a few items, so they're working with, with Jimmy Whitney on it now.
Okay.
So, um, I'll break, I'll push this forward as well to the next meeting, they've, um, I don't know the extent of the, how long it's gonna take them to actually finish the, the improvements, but they're working on it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I remember doing a sidewalk there about, a quite a while ago.
I was gonna say, those houses have been there for all along.
Ten years anyway.
Oh, ten years, Scott.
Yeah, the housekeeping.
So...
That was, it's good.
Great Street, right off of...
No, it's off of, uh...
Where is this, why am I thinking that's where it's?
No, 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 this is, this is off of, well, um, Warren Street is, is behind, it's off Main Street, behind the, the, um, uh, yeah, with the, not a rest home, but for the, uh...
Oh.
No, assistance, okay?
Sunrise.
And sunrise, that's Warren Street that's on the corner to before that.
It's down there?
You go down Warren Street towards Industrial.
That's not right, no, it's in turn.
Okay, no, and this, this whole series of houses to go back, and the road goes, goes back all the way to Industrial. And, yeah, that was done quite a while ago, and I remember doing a sidewalk and all the rest of that, and I thought it was all done, but, uh...
They actually brought in a few different projects that are at various stages of completion and bond, you know, degrees.
Yeah.
Um, so this is one of them that was a little bit easier to kind of, here's what we need to do, a couple others that may be coming up, um, soon, but...
So we just waited back for feedback from the DPW, so continue to the next meeting?
I can, yeah, I can get that forward.
Okay, New View liabilities to assets LTA discussion.
This is my lighted homes project, this, uh, we work with, um, Pittsburgh Gardner, Appal, and Clinton, and put together, um, an application for a chapter one twenty-one A project through the state that will provide funds for purchase, rehab, and sale of lighted homes in those towns. Uh, we put together a list of potential properties in Levisse, as did the other communities, um, they would be residential, um, two or three family, one, two, or three family, um, and would be, uh, have been abandoned for a period of time. So we went through all this, put together a lot of information about these properties, and then it's part of a, of, an application process. So I put this on the list because we had a, um, a board meeting, there is actually a corporation that had to be formed to administer, it's a little like a, um, a redevelopment authority, I guess, or a committee. So they, we formed the board, I'm, I'm the Levisse representative on this, um, on this board, um, for this corporation, and it's in conjunction with New View, they're really administering this whole thing, so it's, it's half, um, uh, members from the towns and half New View, um, staff. And we voted to create the, the corporation, and we voted to, um, submit the application to DHCD, which is Department of Community and Housing Development with the state. And what will happen is they'll submit that document, um, to DHCD, who will then turn around, return it to the communities, who then have to vote to approve it. So in our case, 'cause we're a city, um, what that will entail is, um, a joint public hearing with the city council. So, once we know when we're going to, you know, when we get this back, then we'll have to schedule all that, um, advertise, and then, um, we'll be inviting everyone from the planning board to a, probably to a city council meeting, and then having a joint public hearing there to go. And at that point, we should have representatives from, um, New View, and people who know the, the details of the mechanism better than I do, um, explain it to everyone, and then there would be a vote to approve this, and then it can go forward. So the goal is to have it start, um, the fiscal year, I don't know what the schedule's going to be right now, but, um, that was the, that was the plan. And then going forward, we have, it's two point five million dollars per year for three years, that's been earmarked for this project. And, uh, the co, the corporation will evaluate and select projects, properties, um, to be, to be worked on in that. Now, obviously, all these properties have different issues, they're abandoned, there's title issues, the houses are various stages of, of disrepair, need different types of, um, of repairs. So you have to kind of evaluate each one and see, you know, what's, um, you know, what are the restrictions, you know, is this gonna be in court forever trying to figure out the, the title situation? So each one's kind of different, but the goal is to rehab two or three properties per town, or something like that, per year, um, based on the money that's available. And then, once the property is rehabbed, um, it is sold, um, it is, uh, market rate, and it is, it's not, it's, it, you have, it has to be, um, for, um, home, uh, home buyers who would meet, uh, one hundred and ten percent of median income. So there is some restrictions on it to there, um, but if, if you qualify, there's, um, there's... They could sell it for market rate, and then, um, because the repair, this is the problem, the repair costs exceed the market, the market price. Although, you know, lately, things are kind of changing, but, um, so this allows them to do that, but sell it at market rate, and then the, the difference is covered by this, this program, but the pro, sale proceeds go back into the pot. So it's, um, so it's a little like our housing rehab program, um, exceeding, but it allows those, you know, it would cost too much to rehab, um, to, you know, to sell it, that's why these projects don't get done.
Now, the profits for this, from the sale, it goes back into a pot to buy new property, or...
Yes, back into this, into this, um, the corporation, you know, um, the funds for that.
And, and the salaries for the administration of this?
All comes out of there.
Is, it comes out of that?
Yeah.
Two point five?
Yeah.
The two point five, Ben?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a pilot project, this has not been done before, which is pretty interesting, um, so that also makes it a little harder to understand how it's gonna work. Um, New View's been doing most of the heavy lifting on that, so, um, the legal stuff and, and everything, so, um, we'll see what happens. It'll be very exciting, um, but again, it's, it's a little, um, a little unsure, but it'll be positive.
Hmm, sounds interesting.
All right.
How many homes are approximately in different towns?
Altogether, I think the list is over two hundred. Um, there's a lot more in Pittsburgh's list and Appal's list than ours, our list, I think we came up with about twenty-five that fit. There's some specific requirements, it had to be residential, it had to be, um, you know, uh, one to three family, uh, had to be abandoned, and, uh, no one living there. So if it was rundown, but there's still people living there, those don't qualify, so we had to go through all those and kind of weed it down, too. I think we got, um, it's between twenty and twenty-five, but other towns have like a hundred, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's the rest of them, good, okay.
So I just wanted to give an update on that, but again, I put it on here, at some point, I'm gonna have to try and schedule this during meetings, so...
Thank you.
Well, that probably should've been on the director's report. That's all right. Your executive session?
Sales line here.
Do we have anything else that we wanna...
I have a motion to close the hearing. I'll second it for first.
I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, thank you.
For a vote, aye, though.